Good morning. Welcome to the July 12, 2017 City Council Meeting. Let the record reflect that all council members and officials are present. I would just like to announce that City Council will be going on a summer recess, not a six-month recess as some would like us to do, but a couple of weeks, and we will be meeting again on August 23rd. So our next City Council meeting will be August 23rd. Please stand for the invocation and then pledge allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we ask for your help as we try to share our individual and collective gifts with our community. To refurbish our intentions is a regular manner, to give of ourselves in ways that make a value difference to our families, our neighbors, to our town, and to our nation. All these things we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, John. And the first item of business we have is a very special proclamation. So I'd like to bring John Lloyd Jr. up to the front, please. Come on up here. And I'd like to thank all my ghost authors to help me put this proclamation together for John. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas John Lloyd Jr., affectionately known as Johnny, was hired by the City of Punta Gorda on June 11, 1973, and is retiring after having served dutifully for 44 years. During his career, Johnny's hard work and dedication was recognized as he successfully rose through the ranks from an entry-level worker to utility service manager. And whereas Johnny is admired for his knowledge of all things city, particularly where the pipes are laid, valuable lessons about hard work, versatility, and resourcefulness learned from his father gave him the ability to face and overcome all types of adversity, which has been a true gift to the city. He is highly regarded and respected by his coworkers for his many attributes, especially his hard work, energy, dedication, and warm personality, but what many people will remember most about Johnny is his smile. And whereas Johnny gives of himself in many ways that are often unknown to most, and by doing so betters his community and relations between his friends and neighbors. On November 7, 2007, the city manager honored him with a special poem for calming a particularly tense situation, which you're gonna hear in just a minute. And whereas Johnny is a cowboy at heart and enjoys being a quarter-horse trainer and a showman, he loves to entertain and is a restaurateur and barbecue chef extraordinaire. He is a devout Christian church member, family man, and mentor to everyone he meets. And whereas sometimes you meet a person who, in his own quiet and unobtrusive manner, demonstrates care for his fellow man, Johnny Lloyd is such a person. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim July 12, 2017, as John Lloyd Jr. Day, and calls upon his peers, associates, friends, and coworkers to pay tribute to this special man who has long served the citizens of our city and who will be sorely missed. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 12th day of July, 2017, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. Now, the city manager is gonna share the poem that he wrote in 2007.
There's only probably a few of you who are here today who heard the poem back in 2007. So we are going to relive it. It's titled "The Legend of John Lloyd," and some of you probably weren't around when this incident happened. Every now and then, I can put together some words. I'm quite not in the league as the mayor, but I try to do my best. Over 30 years ago, John followed his father and came to work with the city. Took down Lashley Park colored bathroom signs. That legacy, what a pity. Started in utilities despite pleas not to do so. Should be hauling garbage, some said, who thought they were in the know. He's called utility services manager and works in the field. Locates services in the rightst way to protect our flow like a shield. Learned to run cattle, ride horses, and crack a good whip. Have a problem with his skill? He will give you some lip. Learned to cook and serves up a pretty mean barbecue. After finishing his meal, like sitting in church satisfied on a pew. You see him at all the events, serving up his delectable delights, watching people smile with their full bellies. My, what a sight. And when the noose sparked an outcry, with the media full of chatter, the city manager called upon him to lend assistance in the matter. It's important for Punta Gorda, since it's south of the river, to hang a noose by the Confederate flag. It's enough to make one shiver. He let his neighbor know how the noose caused anger and pain, convinced him to take it down, since not to do so is pretty lame. And when the city manager returned to his office the very next day, there lay the noose on his desk, as if it had a new resting place to stay. He called John to pick it up, since it was he who cut to the chase. Says he will retain it for history as a reminder of what took place. We all went back to our lifestyles, with all the fuss quieted down, responded to ignorance with reason and approach that came out sound. But it didn't last forever. It was too good to be true. The noose went back up, and many seemed blue. Now the noose is back down, as there are changes in the wind. The neighborhood is quiet again, hopefully bigotry in a bin. So now the story ends with the mission all done. The legend of Johnny Lloyd, a hero to more than some.
Thank y'all so much for that. Are they talking about me? That was so sweet, though. But I'd like to tell y'all, y'all the reason why I'm who I am today. Trust and honesty is where I was raised. My dad worked for the City of Punta Gorda 44 years, and I worked 44 years. There's 88 years of loving the taxpayers and the city council and people and the leaders of this town. My role models were the developers and contractors of this town, people that helped raise me. And they would run this town, and they taught me a lot of things. And that's our problem today with young black kids. We don't have any role models. And I got some good role models. I got some great people here today, friends of mine. I got a lot of friends in this world. We started a barbecue place, and I told my son, I said, "I'm gonna go borrow money on Friday to help open it." And I borrowed $60,000 in 24 hours. That's some good friends, isn't it? And didn't even have to pay them back yet. That's real good. But I'd like to recognize y'all for what y'all done for me for those 44 years. I couldn't have done it without y'all, and I'm grateful for that. And it was all about love. And somebody need to take this love that we have for each other all around the country where they having racial problems and all this ugliness and hate, one to another, just to let them know. But I couldn't have done it without God and y'all. God in my life, you know, it's an old saying, you reap what you sow. I sowed some good seeds. Now I'm harvesting my crop back, and I appreciate y'all being who y'all are. And I see some good people in this audience right now. Y'all don't know who this man is, Bill Smith, I mean, Bill Hopper. He helped me a lot. He worked for the city a long time, retired from the City of Punta Gorda. I worked out at the water plant when I was a little old kid, and when Martin Luther King died, they come and escorted us back to town, me and my dad. And I always wondered why that happened. Now I know why they escorted us back to town, because the water plant was so far out, and they didn't want no trouble and anything to happen to us. But I just got so many people that helped me, and I told the man, "It's taking my job. It's like a kid. It take a village to raise a child. It's gonna take the whole city to help him relocate." I told him, and it was a joke, but it's true. I told him, "I'm the best brown-nosed in the world." I used to help contractors doing things that they really not supposed to do, just because I was doing my begging and brownnosing for them. And it's a few people in here, I'd just like to call their name. Neil and Ramona Peters. I couldn't have done it without them. They in the back here, they my bosses. I had a lot of bosses, and I ain't mine. I needed them. I couldn't have done it without them. I'm not too good on computers, and Ramona would cover for me and do the things that I supposed to do on computers. She would do it. She went out of her way to do those for me. And Neil, he would help me also on computer, because, you know, we had to work on computers in my position. And I didn't know anything about computers, but he sits on my side and took his time out and helped me through everything I needed to go through. If that ain't love, I don't know what you call it. But I'm probably the only black guy that probably could handle this. And I told the city manager, and he don't believe, and I'm the last black guy in our time that'll have this position, not because he's black, but because his character, because that he don't know how to love like I do, and he don't know how to deal with people like I know how to deal with people. My attitude is great, and I give all y'all the honor for that. I'd like to recognize my lady in here today, my fiancee Cheryl Scott. I couldn't have do it without her. She stood by me. I'm a big guy, but I'm weak, too. But she stood by me, and y'all know yourself, we can't make it without a lady. I don't care what man think. Every successful man in the world had to have a lady on his side. I believe that. Adam and Eve, Adam couldn't have been here. Somebody said Adam played with the donkeys and the monkeys. That's why God made Eve. But I'm so glad that I got a lady on my side that helped me to the top, and we just can't go top without a lady on our side. And I got a man in here that I got to recognize. Him and I fixed a water leak one time. We took a lighter knot and fixed the water leak. You can do that on cast iron pipe. We got an old lighter, a piece of stem, shaved it with a knife, and knocked it into this pipe and stopped the leak till the fitting came. And then also, we used to cut asbestos pipe. If you cut it with a saw, dust come out, and you could get cancer from it. Him and I learned how to cut it with a sharp axe and a hammer. Would go all the way around in a circle, and it would break. He helped me a long ways, and it wasn't popular for him to work underneath me, as me being a black supervisor, back in the day, 38 years ago. It wasn't cool for a white guy to work for a black guy in the City of Punta Gorda, but he stood it, and he worked there. And I told him, I said, "Rick, one of these days, you gonna be the head man in the city." And he didn't miss it by far. He's the Public Works Director, Rick Keeny. I'd sure like to give him a hand. He's been there from thick and thin with me, you know? And me and him did a lot of things in the City of Punta Gorda. We laid, years ago, 44 years ago, the city wouldn't go deeper than six feet, and they wouldn't lay any pipe larger than six inch. Rick and I rerouted, when I-75 come through town, we rerouted all the pipe, out on 17, out on Riverside Drive, or wherever, out on Jones Loop, we rerouted all those large lines. Our construction crew did that, and because Rick Keeny had my back, he was good. I told him, I said, "Well, you got the brains, and I got the back. Let's do it." But he was my brains for everything we done. We worked as a team, and I appreciate the teamwork that we worked in the City of Punta Gorda. And it was the love we had for one another. Tim Smallwood, I ain't gonna forget him. He was my immediate supervisor, Tim Smallwood. I told Tim, I said, "Tim, I'm gonna make you popular one of these days." He said, "John, how you gonna do that?" I said, "'Cause I'm popular, so you gotta be popular. I'm gonna tell everybody who you is, Tim, because you my boss." And Tom Jackson, he was the head man of all of them, and Tom Jackson remind me of what my boss told me 40 years ago. He walked over to me, and he says, "Look, John," he says, "if I don't see you, you're doing a good job." So I stayed away from Tom Jackson. I didn't wanna be, let him see me, because I know that was the goal, to stay away from the big boss. But I love y'all, and I'm so happy that y'all gave me an award. I'll never forget it, and I hope y'all believe in second chances, because I like to come back and get a job one of these days. But I'm a hard worker, and I'm an honest person, and I tell people, I ain't gonna steal. I rather beg than steal, and that's my motto. And I'm gonna work in the community with some young black kids to try to get them going good and the right way. We're gonna work Cooper Street, and we're just gonna do a lot of things to keep them out of the drugs and the streets and try to get them where they be somebody someday. But I appreciate all y'all and all the things that y'all done for me. I couldn't have done it without everybody in this room and all the city council. We got the best city council we ever had. And the Mayor Kiesling, I'm gonna tell you something about him. I told him, "If I catch the Lotto, she in trouble, because she got to leave her husband." I have enough money to take it. It's gonna take money to do it, but I told him that. And I know that'll never happen, but he gonna be in trouble if I ever get rid. But I know, Mayor Kiesling only look down at somebody when she lifting them up. That's the truth about Mayor Kiesling. She never look down at anybody. She do a lot of work in this community, and she's one of the best mayors we ever had, and we ought to thank her for being the mayor of the town. I'm gonna stop now, because I could go on and on. But I thank y'all for all y'all done for me, and if I ever come back again, I hope it's for a reward, not trouble. Thank y'all so much.
That's what makes this city great, the people that work here and love and care for it every day. So thank you for your 44 years, Johnny's been special. Thank you. Thanks. Tom, anybody wanna, quickly?
There's no way I could follow that. And we could spend the rest of this meeting, Rick and I, and Tim, and all of the city folks that knew and loved Johnny, talking about his accomplishments. I do have to, and I haven't told anybody this, I sign a lot of paperwork terminating people for various reasons, as does the city manager. Sometimes they retire, they move on to new jobs, whatever the case may be. Johnny's laid on my desk for several days. I did not want to sign it, so. It's invisible ink, you can come back.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, next is introduction of border committee member nominees. If your name is in the running for a border committee and you would like to introduce yourself, now would be the time. Anybody in the running for a board? Okay. Make your way to this podium, state your name, and then give us a little...
I'm Dave Perkins. I live in Burnt Store Isles. And I'm applying for the Canal Advisory Committee, position vacancy. Been here five years, avid boater, fisherman, so I do have a concern that we maintain that part of our community. Anything I can do to help you guys, I'd be more than willing to, and, you know, add what I know to it. Prior to leaving, I was raised in Florida, born here. I used to work for the Army Corps of Engineers, and during that time, we were maintaining the intercoastal waterways, the harbors, beach erosion stuff, so I do have some knowledge of, you know, what that's all involved. So if you see fit, I appreciate having the chance to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Don Kidwell. I've been a resident of Punta Gorda for over 20 years, and I'd like to put my name in for consideration for the planning commission. I want to introduce myself by talking about my technical background, my contributions to the community, and why I want the role. I have bachelor's and master's in civil engineering. I've got over 50 years with engineering experience, 37 of those where as a professional engineer. I've worked for a highway department, the Corps of Engineers, a general contractor, and I spent 25 years in the engineering department at Procter &amp; Gamble, where we were doing over $2 billion a year of construction. I managed the most complex project P&amp;G ever had. As a result, I ended up as a speaker at the National Conventions for the Project Managers, the National Convention for Construction Industry Institute, National Convention for the Association of Cost Engineers. I ended up with doing site planning and all with P&amp;G that required me to get into all sorts of legal issues, everything from codes, permits, and everything. I feel like I have a lot of experience that could be of help to our planning commission. In giving back to the community, the second point I wanted to cover, when I arrived here, the first thing I think I was involved with was the Ponce channel dredging and widening that was back in about 2002. Then I was on a team of 10 that helped relocate the Punta Gorda Civic Association building from Marion over to where it's at on Freeve Street now. I was the director of the Charlotte Harbor Yacht Club and helped rebuild it after Hurricane Charlie. I was a founding member of the Mariners and have been involved with them for 15 or more years, and last year, I was the Commodore. I have been a member of the Neighborhood Marine Watch since its inception. I have, right now, I'm on the Punta Gorda Isle Civic Association Long Range Planning Committee and also on the Neighborhood Marine Watch Security Camera Committee. That gets back to why I'm volunteering. I'd like to give back to the communities that I've lived in. Everywhere I've lived, I try to give something back to the community, and that's why I'm volunteering for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Good morning. John Bothwell. My wife and I moved here three and a half, four years ago, and I'm applying for the planning commission position also. Basically, I presume you all have a copy of my resume, but in generalities, I've always been active in my community and believe in giving back. I've been on the board of the Punta Gorda Isle Civic Association, volunteered with goodwill, teaching their small business and mentoring program. I'm active in SCORD, doing mentoring and coaching. Professionally, years ago, I was an engineer, probably not the best one today, but having said that, I've been a business owner and did business consulting for over 30 years. Currently, I'm a Realtor, licensed in Florida, doing both residential and commercial. So I think I bring a perspective, or could bring a perspective to the position, knowing both what the business community is looking for, the residents that live here, but maybe just as important, the people like myself who, three and a half years ago, looked to move here. In fact, Nancy, you're one of the reasons that we chose Punta Gorda, because I got your newsletters on a regular basis. And I feel blessed to live here. There's a lot of people like Johnny that live in our community. And when you get out and you get to meet the general public, you find that this is a special place, and I like to do my part to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. He's not...
No, we didn't get his application until yesterday.
Okay.
So it was too late to submit, and he was, it was explained that he would be considered for any future vacancies.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Four. I live at 3634 Cassandra Drive, and I was gonna apply for the Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee if my application is in. And, but anyways, I'm not contagious. I was at the doctors yesterday. They said this is the best reaction they've ever had to this medication. So, and they took my picture, and they're gonna put it on the wall. We happen to have a Catalina 350 sailboat, which we brought down from the Sassafras River up in Maryland Delaware. In the past, I've been the planning director of BSIA. I have been on the Underground Utilities Working Group, and I'm currently on the leadership team of the County Volunteer Reception Center, which we volunteer to coordinate volunteers if a disaster happens in the county. I've also collected water samples for two years for environmental centers. I happen to be a retired USMC Colonel. I've commanded platoons at Company, 3rd Battalion, 5th Marines, and higher. Now, before I came down here, I was the Director of Recovery and Mitigation for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and, you know, we had many disasters, and, you know, literally tens of thousands of projects. In Pennsylvania, they all involve water. But just one project that we did was the Delaware Canal, which reaches 40 miles, was pretty much destroyed by two hurricanes back to back. We managed to find the money, which was $40 million, to rebuild that, to include a bike trail along it, and rebuild it to historical acceptable levels. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody who did come today and introduce yourself. That's quite a number of people. Sometimes we don't have any. So if you're not appointed this time, please continue pursuing some kind of position, because when there's multiple people, obviously, we can only appoint one at a time. But thank you for coming and introducing yourself. Okay, next, we will move into the public hearing agenda, and we have a couple of quasi-judicial hearings.
Yeah, and before we get into these, I do want to point out, number three, SV-02-17 is in this group of quasi-judicial hearings, because traditionally, that's how we've treated these things. In my research, in the Fishville litigation, it came to my attention that these vacations are more of a legislative action than a quasi-judicial one. And I'll make that note for the record, and moving forward, there may be some need to make some modifications to our various code provisions to make that clear. So at this moment, anyone that's going to be speaking on items one and two, need to rise and be sworn by the city clerk at this time.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, and when you come to the podium to testify, please state your name and indicate you have been sworn.
Now, the first item on the agenda is AP-01-17, and this is an appeal and administrative decision of the zoning official per the City Code of Ordnances, Chapter 26-16-2, regarding new construction of a single-family residence, Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 26, Article 7, Architectural Provision, Section 7.3, Building Style. And this is property located at 913 West Olympia Avenue, Punta Gorda, Florida. And let me just briefly introduce this item as far as the provision of the code that brings us together today on this matter, and that is 16.2, Application for Appeal of Administrative Decisions. And in that provision, it says, "Any person or persons claiming to be aggrieved on account of any ruling of an official charge with enforcing the land development regulations may appeal to the official involved and to the Board of Zoning Appeals." And ultimately, that comes before the City Council after the Board of Zoning Appeals makes their recommendations and findings. And in that section, there are specific criteria for the City Council to consider, and I'm just gonna read those fairly quickly. And it says, "In reaching a decision, the following criteria shall be considered, as well as any other issues which are pertinent and reasonable. A, whether or not the appeal is of the nature properly brought to them for decision, or whether or not there is an established procedure for handling the request, other than through the appeal process, i.e. variance, special exceptions, etc. B, the intent of the regulation in question. C, the effect of the ruling will have, when applied generally to the zoning regulations. And D, staff recommendation, the testimony of the applicant, and the testimony of substantially interested parties shall also be considered." And the reason why I took the time to do that is, I don't know that we've had one of these that I can recall. And staff will explain what the situation is and why this is here before you today.
Thank you.
Good morning. Lisa Hannan, interim zoning official for the record, and I have been sworn. I would like to enter the staff report into the record by reference. This is appeal of an administrative decision denying a change in the architectural elevations of a new construction, single-family residence at 913 West Olympia Avenue. Due to the strict vernacular style guidelines, staff is unable to approve the mixed vernacular style home originally proposed. As a result, the initial building permit was rejected. The applicant met with staff and revised the architectural elevation to meet the code requirements in order to move the building permit forward. The applicant then submitted a plans change to go back to their original mixed vernacular facade design. Staff again rejected the plans change and advised the applicant of the appeal of administrative Staff again rejected the plans change and advised the applicant of the appeal of administrative decision process. The applicant is seeking relief from the $500 application fee. The appeal of administrative decision is the proper process through which the applicant should pursue relief from the requirements. Any relief granted by city council pursuant to this appeal would apply only to this property and would not directly affect other properties affected by these requirements. Urban Design Staff and Board of Zoning Appeals recommend approval of the appeal of administrative decision, AP-01-17. Board of Zoning Appeals further recommends that Chapter 26, Article 7 be amended to permit greater variability and flexibility in terms of architectural style and the addition of mid-century modern as a vernacular. Board of Zoning Appeals, however, recommended denial of the request to waive the $500 application fee. Staff would be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant does have a short presentation.
Any questions before we allow the applicant to make their presentation? Nope. Which podium would you like them at? That one, or over here? Okay.
Hi. Nice to see everyone. I'm Patty Tate. I'm here with my husband, Joel Blatner. We're the homeowners builders. Also like to thank the city staff we've worked with. They've been absolutely awesome in getting us to this point. Okay, so we are talking, as Lisa stated, about a change in vernacular for our home we're building currently on 913 Olympia Avenue. Just to give you a little history here, we purchased our lot in September 2015 while still in Kansas City, and then we relocated here June of 2016 and started designing our home. We researched the semi-historical zoning requirements. We understood we weren't in the historical proper, but we were within some guidelines that we needed to include in our design, those being, of course, as I'm sure you're familiar with, the fifty percent facade for our porch and the recession of the garage and so forth. So we felt like we had met with the city staff. We talked about what the building codes were and that sort of thing, but we didn't know what we didn't know to ask. And we submitted our plans for permit on April 7th, and we were in the process of completing all, any minor changes that they had had to the building codes. And then on the 28th of April, they told us they had opened up the elevation and that we had crossed vernaculars and that that wasn't part of the guidelines, that we had to stay within eight vernaculars that were already on the guidelines. They immediately recommended that we appeal. They felt that the cross vernacular was a very low percentage. It was estimated about five percent difference. They believed it was aesthetically pleasing for the Punta Gorda historical area, and they also said there was a lot of roots for mid-century modern in Punta Gorda and the School of Architecture Design in southwest Florida. However, we were missing this design of vernacular in Punta Gorda, even though it's represented here in the city. So just so everyone's familiar, I'll just update everybody on the building styles that maybe everyone isn't familiar with. There's eight building styles currently, and we are crossing two of the vernaculars, frame and commercial. Our design is, we're calling kind of a modern farmhouse. It's, there's many mid-century modern and school of architecture design examples present within blocks of our building site, and I'll show you a few examples of those later. We did try to factor in not only the code and the location, but the surrounding areas in our design to consider, that it fit within the neighborhood and was going to be a good addition to the community. We designed what we call a farmhouse-style inspiration with some modern interpretation. Our original preference would have been to build a really modern home, but we decided that we wanted to try to do something more mid-century and factor in our neighbors and so forth. This is an extremely popular home design around the country and in southwest Florida, and we believe it maintains the diversity in the historical district, which is the objective of the multiple vernaculars, so that we don't have a homogenized sort of downtown, that it's reflective of different personalities and adds to the charm of the neighborhood. So just to give you an idea of what we were missing in crossing the vernaculars and why this is considered minor, is that we met all of the frame vernacular with the exception of the vertical proportions in three or five bay pattern, and you'll see that represented in the red lines there. So if we had kept those going up straight from the foundation, we would have met that particular guideline. The commercial vernacular, we had only one aspect of that, and that is that we had a flat roof with a parapet on our garage. And again, this is to give it the mid-century or school of architecture design that we wanted to have with our home. Just to give you an idea of the popularity of modern farmhouse, this is just a few of thousands of homes that are being built in this style, many of which are along the southwest Florida coast areas. In the Punta Gorda Historical District, there's countless mid-century modern homes. In fact, I believe, Lisa indicated, some of those were coming up for historical, basically, standards, given their age. Many of these are within a block of our home, including the commercial modern home is in there. So we feel like we fit in. We're not going to stand out as different, and that we actually are establishing our home in the roofs of what is very common in southwest Florida. Southwest Florida does have roots in school of architecture. It actually is sometimes called sort of modern. It's a regional style of post-war architecture that emerged in the Florida central west coast, so this is very prevalent here. A couple of more examples of how the mixture of mid-century and school of architecture design is outstanding and in the local area. So, I'll have to put on my (laugh) here. As Lisa indicated, we're appealing the cross vernacular, sorry, we're appealing the cross vernacular, and that we would like our original design to be granted. And this was also recommended, as she indicated, by the Board of Zoning. They reviewed the vernaculars and actually seemed quite surprised that we didn't have mid-century modern listed. And it was, I think unanimously and very quickly, agreed to add, as well as the ability to ensure there's some leniency in terms of making those decisions when a resident, a builder, is coming forth. And then the wave of the 500 fee, we're asking for basically these reasons. The house met 100% of all the building requirements. As I mentioned, we had resolved those, and then it was three weeks later, we found out, oh, but you didn't meet the elevation requirements. I will say, again, the zoning staff has been awesome to work with, very responsive, very knowledgeable, and we appreciate all the guidance that they provided us. The zoning staff agreed that it was a mixed vernacular design, but very modern, again, ninety-five, five percent. But they still felt that, they felt uncomfortable that they had the authority to approve the design on the vernacular, despite that they do have a provision that indicates they do have the authority to make minor approvals of such changes. I'm not going to question that. I'm just indicating that we do have it in the provisions. It may have been basically because of change in staff at that point, but I feel like they probably should have been able to approve this, but for whatever reason, they felt like they really need to bring this forward. Zoning council, let's see, I feel like the, because they were surprised of the vernacular was not even a part of the building guidelines, that that was, that's kind of something that should be kept up on and approved and ensure that it's available there for builders. So I was, I think they were surprised. I think most of the people that I talked to were surprised that we even had to bring this forward, or that it wasn't even already in the vernacular building guidelines. So I feel like the homeowner shouldn't be financially penalized because of a minor vernacular change that I feel like was already in the provisions to be approved, and also that we were highlighting a change that was quickly adapted and agreed to in terms of adding to the vernaculars. I think this will help improve the zoning guidelines, update the building styles, and also improve the efficiency, so that we haven't basically lost three months in this process. We have incurred not only the 500, but also the additional cost of redoing our designs, the delay in our building, and so forth. So our personal recommendations is that the mid-century modern school of architecture design is approved by the city council as recommended, and also that we ensure that the zoning staff feels comfortable executing the authority that's written in their provisions and they're given, because they have the skill and the expertise to do that, and we really value that when we were going through this process. Any questions?
Any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
How does this elevation change from the time we met a few months ago?
Hasn't.
I liked it then.
I know. We just had to go through the process.
No, we will. She's finishing her presentation. Any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Just really quickly, just for clarification, you are, what you are asking for is the page that says in handwritten notes, "See revised next two pages." That's what you would like to build? Is that correct? With the flat roof over the garage?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
The design that's currently put forth or in the appeal, I assume is attached to the appeal?
Yes. Okay.
Just a question, I guess it might be, I don't know if it's to you, but your statement that staff felt uncomfortable, and it was my understanding, staff didn't feel they were permitted to mix, as opposed to felt uncomfortable about it. So I just wanted to, it's a point of clarification.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Mitchell Austin, for the record, I have been sworn. There is a provision in Article 7, which is the Architectural Provisions and Land Development Regulation, which provides staff with a great deal of flexibility in terms of interpreting and applying the architectural provisions. However, it does specifically spell out that we're not authorized to mix the architectural styles. So while, from staff's perspective, staff's opinion, as clearly demonstrated by the applicant in their presentation, feels that it's a very small deviation from that vernacular, frame vernacular style, it's a deviation that we couldn't, we didn't feel like we had the legal authority to approve based on the literal reading of the code.
Thank you. I thought it was important for us to clarify that it really was not, that they didn't feel like they could, they, because of our code, they couldn't.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking at the provision where it says they have the authority to make minor adjustments in their recommendations, so. But they always gave us a very strong impression that they definitely would like to see the home built, and we appreciate their support.
Thank you.
I have a question for Lisa, please. I'm unclear how this all came about in terms of the disparity between the opinion about the building. At what point did the determination come out that, and this is important because of the fees that they're asking for a waiver on, at what point did staff decide that the vernacular they were proposing did not meet code?
Okay, again, Lisa Hannan, interim zoning official, and I have been sworn. When we received the application, I received an email from the contractor saying, "We have an issue with the site plan. We're going to be submitting a revised site plan." So building had already reviewed the plans. They did sit on my desk, and I was waiting to meet with either the contractor or the property owner regarding, I believe it was the encroachments of the steps coming out of the front porch. That took a couple of weeks. Once we got that and met with them, then I opened, I did not open up the plans until after we had the site plan issue resolved. Then I opened up the plans, and I said, "We have a problem." I called Mitchell Lynn, who does the, Mitchell Austin, who does our architectural review, and we called the property owner that day, and said, "We need to set up another meeting and go over the options."
But the building department had signed off on that plan?
The building department had signed off, but they don't look at architectural elevations. They only look at their building and, building codes for building and structural codes. We look at, zoning looks at site plan, placement, setbacks, and architectural elevations in the Neighborhood Residential Zoning District.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Well, it's kind of already open, but this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on AP-01-17, please make your way to this podium to my right. State your name that you've been sworn. You have three minutes. Anybody like to speak on this administrative appeal?
Madam Chairman, I'm Dr. LaFour, who's duly sworn in previously. I just came because I sit on that board. We did approve that change. The problem that we had was, the code was very specific to seven characteristics that were allowable, so we felt that the mixed vernacular was an appropriate blend of the seven that were already there, but that the staff had a problem because it was so specific to allow them more leeway to make decisions on their part that we went ahead and gave the approval. As far as the $500, we rejected that portion of the request, reason being is because the city spent quite a bit of time and money and energy researching and developing the plans. So as a board member of that board, that's the reason we made the decision that we did. And as far as the authority that we had, really, that lies with the city council to make the decision as to which characteristics were appropriate. But I think in lieu of other construction that's coming up, and to give the staff the freedom to make those kinds of decisions, that we left it in your hands to make the decision. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on AP-01-17? Please make your way to the podium here. Anybody like to speak on AP-01-17? Last call, third call, last call to speak on this administrative appeal.
We have to close the public hearing.
I'd just like to make one comment, that I agree that the city has expended energy, but I also feel that the homeowner has also expended energy. And I think in the long run, that Punta Gorda is going to be enriched by the fact that this has been added to your guidelines, that the flexibility for the staff hopefully will be approved, and that overall, this will benefit all home builders in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And during our discussion, we may need you to clarify something, so you could still speak during our discussion as the applicant, but we're just closing the public hearing.
And before you begin your discussion, there's one matter with respect to the criteria for you to consider that sort of is a, requires a legal determination, and that is the first one, as to whether or not there are any other remedies available under our code other than the one that's presently before you. And variance would be the one that would ordinarily come to mind under circumstances like this, because clearly, special exception wouldn't apply. And let me suggest, too, that under the criteria for variance, there's two things that would actually kick this type of a decision from that. The first is that there's nothing particularly unique with respect to the land or the property, which is one of the first things that you have to decide whether or not a variance should be considered for a, from a particular regulation. But the one that's probably more problematic would be that the strict enforcement and literal enforcement of the zoning regulations would create an undue hardship, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience on the property owners. And typically, that means that the, if the hardship was self-created, that would kick it out from the variance provision. So since we're talking about a design that the applicant desires, one that is, would be a self-created problem in that it doesn't meet the criteria of the zoning code as written, that would also kick it out of the variance processes being available for this project. So I'll make the legal determination that they've satisfied criteria, number one of the criteria for the appeal.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. So now we'll start our Aye opposed? Carried unanimously. So now we'll start our discussion. So we met with the, I think we've all met, I met personally with Ms. Pate and discussed the situation. And basically, it became an essence of time, because they're in a rental, and they've had to, you know, time went by where they were making changes. And then when this, you know, this, this problem arose, they were quite, they were pretty much finished designing the house at that point. So, and if, if we could have done it differently, then maybe we could have considered adding a vernacular or possibly allowing a blend. I would not be in favor of a blend, only because in talking with Mitchell, some of the styles would not make a good blend. Some would and some wouldn't. So in order to police the blending of, of styles, I think that would be hard, but I would definitely be in favor of adding the mid-century modern. And if we would have had the time, we could have done that before they'd have to appeal this administrative appeal, this decision. So I think the timing of this was, was the real problem here. I do sympathize with the homeowners, you know, I was an owner builder myself, and it's, it's a, it's a long, arduous process, but I'll listen to what you all have to say. Nancy?
I, too, I think most all of us have met with the, the home, future homeowner. And I think this is one of those situations that we're kind of, as I've talked with Howard, we're really finding problems with our code that don't provide for flexibility, and that are difficult, not just for residents, but business owners. And, and I'm not saying across the board, but there are issues that come up. And I think, I'm really in favor of giving our staff a little bit of latitude. If there's, if there's one element that crosses into another vernacular, but it looks fine, you know, it's probably not going to make a difference. I also love the mid-century modern vernacular. That's my style. If I could change my home, I would. And so I think adding that makes total sense. And as far as the $500 is concerned, I think, in, in some cases, it's because of these, our code and the way it's written, that we really, we're really finding these things out. So to cause this homeowner to pay $500 for us to learn, I think that that's something that we should, should consider a good learning experience. So that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Gary?
A house of, of this size and cost, I don't think $500 is the Achilles' heel, but I do think there's a principle about here. And I am agreeing completely with what Nancy's saying here. I just would also like to point out that the, that this couple approached us, has done, have bent over backwards to appease this and so forth. And I think that we should allow this to go forward as easily and expeditionally as possible. And I think for the purposes of sending a message that we want to be cooperative, and plus this is adding to our knowledge and our ability to improve our coding, I think that the $500 should be our, out of our pocket. So that's where I'm sitting right now.
Okay.
I pretty much agree with what's been said so far. I, I too agree, Nancy, that the code sometimes inhibits us and, and cuts our hands off despite our face. But in this particular case, I think they have tried to work with the city and tried to make this work for everybody. I don't want us to become the community that, that we're always saying no about something, because that's kind of the perception that's out in the, in the marketplace right now. I feel bad about that. The homeowners did meet with each of us individually, and I thought they were more than willing to compromise, and they did work out an alternate site plan if it became necessary. I, I, this is the home that they really would like to build. I think we have to show good faith and, and allow this to go forward and quit holding them up on the development of it. They certainly have had their share of compromise through this whole thing, and a lot of expense. And I agree with the rental, they, they're in a rental that's going to, the lease is going to expire. They're going to have to find another place to lease before this is over, depending upon how long it takes. I think we have to be good citizens and try to work with them and make it happen. As far as the $500 goes, I think there was error on both sides in the planning part of this process. Maybe we could agree to split the difference and, and meet them halfway on the $500 fee. That's where my position is.
I, I think that one thing, I think that our urban design staff should have more ability to practice their art of architecture. I think that we tie their hands a bit too much in regards to that. And I, I think that this needs to be added to the vernacular, and I don't think they should be penalized for this. I think that this is a learning experience for us, and I just, again, the bigger issue, I do think the urban design, we should allow them to have more ability to practice their art.
And I, I do want to say, with all respect to Dr. Lepore, that I understand the rationale that the, that our BZA actually, why they recommended to continue the $500, because staff has spent considerable time. I don't know if the BZA, I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know if the BZA actually considers what we've been running into, is all the code issues, that we really need to be, like Lynn said, more flexible. And so that's, from our standpoint, it's, it's a different story.
So I would entertain some kind of motion from?
I'll make a motion to approve the, approve the, I don't know how you want to call it the?
Appeal?
Appeal.
The appeal. I'll approve the, a motion to approve the appeal, to allow staff more flexibility in allowing, what, should I say, mixed?
Would, would you allow me to make a proposed motion?
Yeah, I want to make it specific, so go ahead.
Yeah, that the, that the, you recommend, you move to approve the appeal?
Mm-hmm.
That has been submitted in AP-01-17, and authorize the construction of the residence with the site plan and vernacular and facade as, as depicted in the application.
But I also want, do we have to do these separately?
I think we should probably do that separately.
Okay, let's do these things separately. Okay. So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, a second to approve the appeal as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carried unanimously. What do you want to do about the fee? Anybody have a motion on the fee?
I move that we waive the fee.
I second.
We have a motion, a second to waive the fee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carried unanimously.
I'll make a motion that we allow staff to, I didn't say the right word, I want to say, to, to have some flexibility to mix vernacular.
Yeah, I think that's going to require an ordinance amendment. So if you would care to direct staff to come back with some form of ordinance amendment that would allow for flexibility.
Okay, then that's the motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to bring back some ordinance changes to incorporate some of the ideas that were presented today.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
And then a motion to add mid-century modern vernacular to our list of vernaculars.
That would be part of the ordinance.
Oh, you're just going to make that part of the ordinance?
That would be part of the ordinance.
Well, let's vote on it.
Well, it, it would be sort of direction.
Yes.
A direction to add mid-century modern to the list of vernaculars.
Agreed.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to add mid-century modern. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carried unanimously.
And we all expect an invitation to the ribbon cutting.
(laugh) Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing a beautiful home.
We're all learning, we're all learning new process this morning. Okay, next we have SE-03-17. And if there's anybody new that has not been sworn, who thinks they may speak on this item, anybody would like to be sworn in? Okay, seeing none?
This is a?
Okay, and we have one.
You raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is SE-03-17, a request by Iris Consulting Group LLC, agent for Raymond Allen and Sandra Marlowe, property owners, for a special exception pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.8, Punta Gorda Code, to allow an assisted living facility with a memory unit, memory care unit to be located in a general multifamily zoning district as is permitted by special exception approval per Chapter 26, Section 3.5 F13, Punta Gorda Code, on property zoned, general multifamily, 15 units per acre, and addressed at 156 Madrid Boulevard.
Thank you.
Good morning, Lisa Hannan, interim zoning official, and I have been sworn. I would like to enter the staff report into record by reference. The applicant is seeking approval to allow an assisted living facility with a memory care unit to be located in a general multifamily zoning district as permitted by special exception approval. Special exception requests for assisted living facilities are not unusual. In 1994, a special exception request for 2295 Shreve Street, the Palms of Punta Gorda, was approved and was amended in 2011 for expansion of their memory care unit. This property is located in the general multifamily zoning district. In 1996, a special exception for 250 Bow Harbor Boulevard was approved for the Brookdale Extended Care Facility. While this property is zoned neighborhood center, it is immediately adjacent to general single-family zoning district. And most recently, city council approved SE-02-17 for an assisted living facility at 2001 Akia Stoll Drive. As identified in the city's comprehensive plan, policies and objectives support the need for additional group home facilities for the elderly. The housing element defines a group home as a facility that provides a living environment for unrelated residents who operate as the functional equivalent of a family, including such supervision and care as may be necessary to meet physical, emotional, and social needs of the residents. Assisted living facilities are comparable in services to group homes, which are also identified included in this definition. It is recommended that any new facilities should be individually small in scale, located within residential or mixed-use areas, and in close proximity to shopping and essential services, and have a residential character. As identified in the attached staff report, the proposed request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and will have less of a traffic impact than a multifamily development as is permitted for the parcel. The proposed request will be required to meet development standards for buffering and parking, and be required to meet all development standards and building codes in effect prior to construction. The Urban Design Division recommends approval of SE-03-17. And after a duly advertised public hearing held on June 6th, or June 26, 2017, the Punta Gorda Plan Commission also recommends approval of the request.
Do we have a presentation by the applicant, or?
Good morning. I'm Jeff Leitner with Iris Consulting Group. We are the developer of the project. The history of this is-
And you have been sworn?
I have been sworn.
Thank you.
The history of this is we looked at this land about eight months ago and got involved in it. We looked at other parcels in the community. We want this to be a good project for the community. We've worked diligently with the homeowners association, with the city, as much as we can to make this very compatible. It is strictly for-